Good evening. I'd like to gavel in the January 23 meeting of the Foxborough School Committee. Just for everyone, this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. And welcome to the meeting. It's a little cold out there, but maybe the next couple of days the snow will go away. A little warmer, huh? I didn't see anyone on the open public comment list. I just checked it before the meeting began, so I see no one on the list. So there is no open public comment at this time. Approval of minutes. It's funny, when I looked in the packet, the minutes were actually in front of the Policy Subcommittee. So we could, I think we probably could and should, consider the approval of the Policy Subcommittee minutes that were in our packet, if anyone would like to motion those. It's a Policy Subcommittee Minutes of January 12th. I'll move to, excuse me, accept the minutes of the Policy Subcommittee meeting from January 12th as presented. Seconded by...
I second.
Seconded by Michelle. Before we vote, I see that Sarah has jumped on. Thank you, Sarah. Welcome. Can you hear me? Hi.
Yes.
Good. So we have Sarah Ladani on video here, so we will do our votes tonight via roll call vote. And we have a motion on the floor. Motion by Brent, seconded by Michelle, to accept the Policy Subcommittee minutes of January 12th. Any further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none. I'd like to do a roll call vote. I'll start to my right. Brent?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And me, aye as well. So that's a 5-0 vote for the Policy Subcommittee minutes. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is Teaching and Learning Highlight. Our Community Wellness Coordinator is here to visit us. Welcome. Welcome, Amy. We're so glad you could be here, and I'm really, I like topics like this when we can really learn about something that I don't know if everyone knows about.
Yeah.
The depth and the coordination and what's all in the job. So it's a great opportunity for us. So welcome, Amy.
Excellent. Thank you so much for having me. We have three really exciting updates to share tonight from sort of the community wellness corner of the district. That involves a lot of different partners. So I know that we do have some slides. I'm sure that Paul is there. Not, not the wrong one. The first one, Paul, that you had that you showed, the, there you go.
There you go.
Excellent. So if you advance one more slide...
You've got the clicker, actually, Amy.
Oh, I do.
Right there in front of you.
So I'm too far.
We're all fancy here.
So this evening, what we wanted to share with you is first, that we have now added a webpage onto the district webpage for community wellness. Additionally, we have a Facebook page that we wanted to share with folks. And finally, and probably most exciting, we want to talk about the Parent Academy that is starting as sort of culmination of efforts from the Foxborough Public Schools, the YMCA, Grace Chapel, CPAC, and share what that's going to look like for our community and hopefully get a few more folks registered. So the first thing I wanted to share with everybody tonight is we've taken some time to pull together the resources that we're commonly using in the sort of community wellness area and put them on the webpage so that folks can access them on their own. So this is a way for people to be able to think about what if they sought out our help, what would they be getting? If they were looking for things on their own, how could they access those sort of services? And really, a nice way of showing everything that's available here in Foxborough. So anyone who's interested in this, we have a QR code on the screen that you can access from your device. But also, if you were looking for the webpage, you would go to our main Foxborough page, and then under the Office of Student Supports, you would also find the Community Wellness tab. One of the things that I really like about this community wellness page is I think it does a great job of sort of showing the toolbox that we're pulling from. I've been here in the district for about the past 15 months, and right now, I feel like we have a good way of approaching families who might need support. So we're kind of using things like Interface, right? That helps folks access behavioral health resources that are customized to them, that meet their needs schedule-wise, insurance-wise, provider-wise. But also, we have things on this resource page and the way that we're approaching families. We're working really closely with our Family Resource Centers in the area. We're very, very closely aligned with the Quincy Family Resource Center. Those are free agencies all across the state, so there's no insurance needed, there's no out-of-pocket costs. And the Family Resource Centers, again, work really hard to match folks with just right behavioral health resources. They also do a great job of meeting those tangible needs. Again, a lot of what we're doing, in addition to trying to match those social, emotional, behavioral pieces, we understand, and I think it's something that Foxborough as a community really understands well, and it's been the way that we've always approached families, is you can't be meeting the needs of your family socially and emotionally if you have tangible needs that have to be met. So a lot of the organizations on here, right, like making sure that we're connecting folks and that they're aware of the Foxborough Food Pantry and the Discretionary Fund. Again, we're working really closely with our partners at the YMCA, and they are able to help people with needs like that, in addition to connecting folks with scholarships for the YMCA, which then opens them up to a whole world of resources, right? It gives them leisure activities, resources, skill building, all of those different pieces. So when I think you look at this website, I hope folks are seeing opportunities for themselves, but it's also sort of giving a glimpse into the connections that the mental health staff across the district are making for people each and every day. You know, some families need different things. Some folks are totally able to call Interface and make a connection with a clinician that's going to help meet a need for them, whereas other people might need more as a family to help them in whatever situation they may be. Additionally on here, right, we do have Interface as a great way to sort of make an ongoing connection with behavioral health provider, but we also want folks to know if there's an acute need in their family, if somebody's like struggling with a behavioral health issue, that they can always access Riverside Mobile Crisis and calling Riverside and like connecting with an urgent care clinician in that way. It doesn't always mean that something big is going to happen for a family, but it can mean that we're able to meet that need for them, right? That they're able to get that acute help in that moment. Additionally, Massachusetts added the Behavioral Health Helpline at the beginning of 2023, and that's another way that if there's a more acute need, they can do things like matching with the ongoing behavioral health provider. But the Massachusetts Behavioral Helpline has contracts with different agencies, places like Riverside, that they may be able to say, like, this is such an acute case, this family has this need, and we want to help them before it becomes more serious, and they may be able to get them services faster than, say, going the route of working with your pediatrician or just going through Interface. So all of these are resources that we encourage people to be looking at, thinking about places like Safe Coalition, also highlighting the connections, the departments that we have here in town, reminding people that Foxborough has our new dedicated social worker within the Public Safety Department, and that all of our school resource offices, again, are people that you could talk to if you were having an issue, and reminding everybody that our mental health staff is really well skilled at helping families figure out what they need and how we can meet that need for them. So I definitely encourage folks to check out our webpage. However, we did survey last year and heard from folks about where are they getting information, especially about events and resources, and what we heard overwhelmingly from the people who answered our survey is that Facebook is the place they are getting information. So we have created a Facebook page recently. I will say that I had an alert last week that our Facebook page has reached over 1,000 people since we started it just before winter break, so we know people are viewing the events. Again, you can access the Facebook page with your cellphone, or you can search on Facebook. It's called FPS Community Wellness, and we're using that platform to share resources with folks and make sure that, you know, our Mobile Crisis is on there, the Behavioral Health Helpline, also our events, and additionally, like sometimes just maybe some fun inspiration and things like that. But stuff is coming up all the time. Recently, Jen Rosenberg got an email about a free dental clinic that Harvard Dental School is offering, so it's just something that we can quickly put out there to people to say that if this is something that would help you, here it is. It may not be something that all families need, but if even just one Foxborough family needs it and they're matched up with that, then I think that it's worth it for us. So we have been having some success with Facebook. We know that that's reaching people, and that's particularly exciting because we are launching a new Parent Academy. So this Parent Academy, previously, we were doing parent education events that often followed that really typical format of expert speaker would come in, they'd talk on a topic for 45 minutes an hour, we'd open it up for questions or comments, and then sort of wrap up the evening. This is something that has been brought together by multiple organizations. So as you can see on the flyer, Hockamock YMCA, Grace Chapel, Foxborough CPAC. There are a lot of folks who are in the planning here and making sure that we're thinking about multiple perspectives, and this is going to look different in that we're still going to have those expert speakers. We have really great relationships in Foxborough with a lot of very skilled and knowledgeable folks, but in addition to sharing those remarks, there's going to be time for connection and discussion so that families can sit around a table and say to each other, this is how this challenge is showing up for my family, this is how we're being successful, this is what I'm still looking for help with. So the intention here is that we will have three topics this year. The first will be February 6th. Our locations are actually going to run simultaneously in Foxborough and Boston, and that way, all of our Foxborough Public Schools families are able to access the content. So on February 6th, Dr. Elizabeth Englander, who you may know, she's spoken in Foxborough previously, she'll be here in Foxborough, and our topic is going to be digital wellness and sort of how can families model for their children? What are the trends that we're seeing? What are the impacts that, you know, living in a digital world has for our kids? And how are the strategies going to look in each and everyone's family? She'll provide some remarks, but also, both in Foxborough and Boston, we'll have those small groups. We're working on having staff facilitate from all of our organizations, but also, we've nominated and we've spoken with some parents in the community who are going to help facilitate those conversations, which is really nice, and everybody will have an opportunity to sort of share their piece and hopefully leave feeling like they have something that will impact their own family, their community, their network. In addition to the digital wellness, we're also going to do one with substance use. So during that one, Safe Coalition will actually travel to Boston, because we had the Hidden in Plain Sight exhibit here in Foxborough last year, and we want to make sure our Boston families have access to that. So Jen Levine Knight will do her comments from Boston, and we'll zoom those back here to Foxborough for the small groups in Foxborough. And then lastly, Larry Epstein, who's one of our consulting psychologists, will speak with us about just general positive mental health, and we're going to do that in the late spring to sort of get folks ready for the summer with their families, think about those positive habits and routines that we can all be in to promote really great mental health for people. So we are very, very excited about that. A lot of folks in town are working really hard on these events, so we're hoping to fill both locations. If you are ready to register now, which I hope some people are, the QR code is on the screen. Again, event number one from our Parent Academy will be on Tuesday, February 6th, where the Foxborough location is at Foxborough High School. We've actually generously had a restaurant in Hyde Park offer to host our event, because Metco Headquarters already had an event, and the Boston Public Libraries are currently in tax season, so a lot of their rooms are occupied. So we have a really beautiful spot in Hyde Park that folks can go to, too, and that's not just Boston residing families. If somebody's a commuter and it's easier for them to come to Hyde Park instead of driving all the way home, we would love to see them there, or even if you just want to come to a really great restaurant in Hyde Park for good discussion. So that's sort of where our three big updates are. I want to encourage folks, if you have questions or feedback about these events, things that you want to know about, how is this working, how do you refer folks, please reach out to me via email, or you can reach me at the high school, too.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, great update. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the new stuff, too, Facebook and everything. Comments from the committee?
So, thank you. It's exciting. I can imagine that getting the ball rolling and all this and getting the communication out there that these resources are available is a big hurdle, and this is really starting to move that, I'm going to mix my metaphors, sorry, it's a big boulder, and now we're starting to move the boulder. That's a better consolidated metaphor. Just as an additional plug, these resources are available to all members of the community. It's not specific populations within the schools, it's not specific populations within the town. These resources are available to everyone. Now, there are certain things that apply based on situations, but the resources that you're making available here are available to anyone.
Yep.
And that, you know, and we do hope that everybody takes advantage of them.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any comments from anyone else? Very appreciative. Can't see Sarah, but Sarah, if there's any comments, you can...
No, thank you very much. That's wonderful.
Thank you, Sarah. Dr. Berdus, any comments?
I would just like to, you know, one of the things that Amy had said, talking about our mental health staff and how skilled they are in each of our buildings and for parents to see them as a resource, and would just really like to echo that comment. In addition to Amy, all of our mental health staff, whether it's adjustment counselors, psychologists, social workers, we know that that's a topic that a lot of people talk about in districts and the supports, and we have such fantastic people that are there to be able to support our students every day, and they do a lot of work with our families. And these academies in bringing this together is really another example of the work they're doing during the day to try to meet the needs, those wraparound needs for everyone.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight and taking the time and...
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. For everything. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Update.
All right, so I only have just a small handful of things. The first that I wanted to do was to welcome one of our new school resource officers. Melissa O'Connor has joined the Foxborough Police Department, and she has joined us as one of our school resource officers. She comes with a plethora of experience from being in Belmont as a police officer for the last 15 years. She served as an SRO in Belmont as well, and she's also coached many sports. So not only from the public safety standpoint, but from the coaching and working with young adults and students, she has a great amount of experience from those roles and all of the things that she's done in her past. And so she joins us with our team with, when we think about Sergeant Allen and Sergeant Collins and our other SROs, Officer Godino and Monterosso. So we welcome her. She's been very visible already, and so it's exciting to have her join what is already a great dynamic team. I want to congratulate nine of our Foxborough High School musicians who were selected to perform in the All-State Ensemble this year. It's the highest number to date.
That's awesome.
As far as those that were chosen to participate. So that's actually held in March. They go and rehearse with students from all over the state, and then will perform at Symphony Hall. So congratulations to those students. Like to note that this is Kindness Week. There's a lot of kindness that takes place year-round, but particularly this week, the elementary schools, a lot of different activities, and whether it's specific lessons that are really targeted towards kindness. It falls within National No Calling Name Week, No Name Calling Week, which is January 15th to the 19th, and we've coordinated when we think about like second step that we have and our anti-bullying lessons and all of that. So there's different activities that are taking place, and just want everybody to remember to reach out and to be kind, and you'll see lots of examples of that by our students. As we get closer to the end of January, we have the term that's ending for the secondary level for middle school and high school. Term two is coming to a close, and then for our kindergartners and our specialty areas, they will be getting their first, like, report cards because their term ends, so that's happening in January. One of the things I wanted to mention that Amy had talked about with Dr. Elizabeth Englander, she worked with our middle school students and doing some cyber bullying, cyber bullying prevention assemblies, and that took place for all of our middle school students, and then questions that went home for parents to really generate that conversation at home. So any of our middle school parents, if you haven't asked, look at some of the things that Ms. Frazier has sent out, some really good discussion topics to get that dialogue going with students, particularly where we know a lot of students receive devices over the holidays, and that's new, and how critically important it is to have those conversations. And one of the things that we know is that conversation needs to take place earlier and earlier. Many times when you start to get into middle school, some of your middle school students will say, it's too late. It's too late. And really, the Parent Academy events that Amy spoke to, lots coming up. Another one that, one other one that I do want to mention is a parent conversation with Dr. Lisa Decker that's coming up on February the 1st at 6:00 PM at the Ahern, and that is Learning to Let Your Child Lead Their Future. She has worked with our staff and really is an expert in the area of special education, and this conversation's going to be helping parents to really think about practical ideas for them and how they can best support their child with disabilities and owning their own future. So she is outstanding. She truly is. She's done a lot of professional development for us and working with our faculty and staff, and so this will be really targeted for parents.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Looks like a no from Sarah as well. Thank you very much. Next, report, Nate, report from their student rep to the school committee.
So there's not much new going on, but midterm started today, so that's always exciting. And Cocoa Creme was a success last week, and then there's 18 days until our next day off in February, which feels like an eternity from now.
Next on the agenda is our public, fiscal '25 budget public hearing and vote for recommendation. I think it's our time to ask any questions or address anything. Would you like to, you want to kick it off, Mr. Yukna? Any updates to our process and our budget documents?
So we're going to make a last-minute change here.
Want to move your microphone? Is that the only microphone? Just making sure. Thank you.
We're going to make a last-minute change here, or request a last-minute change here. Both Dr. Berdus and I were presented with an issue that the town budget now looks to be out of whack by about $800,000. It's not in general because of us being at 3.5%, because we're one of the few that actually made the 3.5% level. Many of the other budgets are over, some are under, which is, you know, some of the smaller ones are under. But I think in trying to put our best foot forward, I'm going to recommend that the school committee add an extra $100,000 to the outside resources for state funding, where they will reimburse us for the newcomers. It's a little bit of a risk. We do have some clarity from Desi. Both Dr. Berdus and I were online with Desi, and I was online with our state reps as well. There is no information on FY '25 funding at this point. We do know for a fact that the hotel is booked through December 31st, and it's, you know, quite honestly, it's up to the hotel and the state whether or not they'll extend it. So likely that we will get 50% of next year's payment, assuming it stays at the $104,000, $104 per student per day type thing. So with that, if we are, if we do get that, then you're fully covered with the, what will be moving up to a $503,000 number on your outside resources. And I think that's, I think the logic there, based on the conversations we've had, is a risk, but it's a minimal risk, and if we had to, we would be going back to look at our budgets during the year and potentially at some of our other resources internally to see if we can make up a difference, if it becomes a difference. It would be small, I believe at that point, it would be somewhere in that $100,000 range, but I still think it's the right thing to do. The $100,000 switch would bring our school budget down to 3.25% increase, and it, quite honestly, I think is a fair thing to do for us at this point. I think, again, there's a risk to the school committee and a risk to the school budget, but I do believe it's minimal and can be managed if we need to manage it from there. So from your previous budget, where we were at $42,192,000, we're going to be at $42,192,742 is the total budget that we are looking for the town side. Obviously, we will have our outside resources that make up the difference. Our total budget is in the $45,382,446. So we have about $3.3 million in outside resources between grants, you know, circuit breaker, different accounts that we get on a regular basis. So we just are going to be increasing that number from, you know, by $100,000. And again, I think that puts the school committee's budget well within the range of where we, you know, should be to help the town on this side of things.
Thank you. Thanks for that update.
Thank you.
Any questions, members?
So there's a process because of Richard Pearson being, having some connection to the athletic budget. So you'll see that we've given you two different votes. The first vote would be the entire budget, as I just listed, excluding Athletic Department. We could exclude just the amount that's paid out to the MIAA, but that, quite honestly, doesn't make sense. So we just concluded, excluded the entire athletic budget. Mr. Pearson will step out, and then you'll vote on the athletic budget, and that would be the total budget for FY '25.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I motion to accept the fiscal year '25 school budget excluding the athletics in the amount of $41,290,130. Second.
Seconded by Brent. So motion by Rob and seconded by Brent on the first motion. Any questions on that motion? Any further discussion?
No.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, hearing none and seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote again. Sarah, I'll start with you. Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye for Michelle. Rob?
Yes.
Brent?
Aye.
An aye for me as well. So that's a 5-0 vote on the first motion for the budget. Thank you very much, and I'm going to step out now.
So the second motion, to accept the fiscal year '25 school budget for the athletic expenditure in the amount of $802,612. Questions on that?
No, I'm just...
A second.
Okay. Thank you. So Rob motion, Michelle seconded. Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you. Michelle?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
And I'm also in favor. So 4-0-1.
Yay.
Thank you.
For those people watching at home, and this, we say this every year, that we start talking about the budget as early on in the fall, and so we did this vote, but it's, what? Fully the third time we've gone over it in meeting, and that doesn't count the number of budget subcommittee meetings, all the talks that we do with town, and all of the work that goes on with department heads, leadership, faculty, and whatnot to put this budget together, and so this is just the last step. So thank you again, Dr. Berdus, Mr. Yukna, and everyone on your team for all the work you do to do this, especially in this year. It seems like every year in the last number, we've had a number of hurdles, but this year was particularly Herculean in your task to handle all the newcomers, so thank you for your attention to all that.
Make a vote.
Yes.
4-0.
4-0.
Actually, I don't, I don't think it's a 4-0-1.
It's a 4-0-0.
I think it's 4-0-0.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Because you're not...
I was not in attendance for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. So next is our next budget discussion item, FY '25 approval of the Capital Improvement Plan budget. Any discussion by members or Mr. Yukna or Dr. Berdus, anyone?
No updates.
I got a, I have to pull it up. Do you have the number?
I can't log on.
Okay, I'll get it, I'll get it. Do you have it, Brent? I'm sorry, I...
In my haste, I just...
Yeah, yeah, I just, I had it up... Yeah, yeah, I just, I had it up first.
I got it here.
I got it, I got it.
Racing to the CIP. Does anyone else have it? I have it right here, I think.
You're in the right spot.
I got it right here.
I think one of the, why you're pulling that up, an important piece here is the technology.
Yep.
And the, you know, the world that we're living in there, here, and then with, with refresh cycles and all that we have in technology expenses, and that being the biggest difference with the CIP.
I thought we had a good discussion about that at the last meeting and the importance of maintaining all of these items. I have it in front of me, and Michelle, you passed it to me as well. Thank you. It identifies the computer software upgrades and printer replacement for 350. The passenger buses, three of them, 354,000. Copiers, four, at 40,000. Music department equipment, 25,000, for a total of $769,000.
Any questions, anyone?
I move to accept the CIP budget as presented, in the amount of $769,000.
Well, second?
Seconded by Rob. So moved by Brent and seconded by Rob, CIP request budget of $769,000. Any further discussion? I'll start on my right. Brent?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And me, aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote on the CIP budget. Thank you very much, everyone. So what?
Then it's just on the town meeting.
Correct. Okay. Move the budget along, and thanks, and thank you to the committee for all of your work over the past 30, 45 days or so, whatever it was, crunching through numbers. A lot of numbers there, a lot of sheets there. Mr. Yukna and Dr. Berdus and Dr. Berdus, too, for your, your support, information, and communication to us about that. It's a big, it's a big decision for the school committee, the 42, you know, the $40 million plus budget. And for, and we've taken a lot of time on that. And so really important, and I commend us all for taking a good, hard look at it, but also for trying to balance it with thought and clarity, you know, for exactly what we need to run the school system. So thanks all for all of your discussion. Next on the agenda is the approval of the 2024-25 school calendar. I think we all had it last meeting. I think it was the first time last meeting. We all got to look at it, got to take it away, think about it, talk to constituents, and see where we are. Any questions from it? Dr. Berd, anything to add?
No, I think it, it goes, it's a traditional calendar for us, with staff starting before Labor Day, students after Labor Day. The difference, as Dr. Berdus had pointed out at the last meeting, was the professional development day, because it is every four years on the election day. So it will not be in October, it will be in November. And that it is in alignment with the Department of Education and what we needed to make sure with seniors' last day and graduation and the last day of school.
Agreed. Would anyone like to motion the acceptance of the calendar as proposed?
I make a motion to accept the Foxborough Public School calendar of 2024 to 2025 as presented.
Second?
Seconded by Rob. So motion by Michelle, seconded by Rob, to accept the calendar as presented. Any further discussion? Thank you, Sarah. Roll call vote again. We'll start with you, Sarah. We'll go left to right, or whatever. I guess that's how you're looking at it.
Aye.
Aye. Michelle?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
An aye for me as well. 5-0 vote for the school calendar approval. Thank you very much. And thanks for catching that senior date. And Nathan, you escaped. The seniors escaped, so we got the new date. Next up on is, Dr. Donovan is in the house with people supporting him. So if you'd like to come on forward for a discussion of your very hard work and a lot of work in the vision of a graduate.
And your clicker is there for your PowerPoint presentation as well.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Dr. Wazlowski will be joining us shortly. She's en route. The agenda is going faster than expected, so. It happens. It's a good problem to have.
Thank you for bringing Kristen.
She'll be here.
Probably, Kristen, your third NEASK at Foxborough, or?
It's about right.
Yeah, I did one with them way back in 2001.
I believe, yeah, I just started.
And I think you had just started, yeah.
And I think it was 2008, 2009. So yeah, I think this is my third round.
So you had the experienced one.
Oh, I guess so, yeah.
So I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here tonight and to, to thank first Mrs. Dorico and Dr. Wazlowski, who are co-chairs for our NEASK process, accreditation process at the high school, and who have really been leading our vision of the graduate work. So the vision of the graduate is a required element of the 2020 accreditation standards for NEASK. Prior to 2020, the required element was a core values and beliefs about learning and mission statement document. And if you can kind of visualize in your mind the inside of the high school auditorium, or the gym entrance, or the library, those are actually posted on a, like a beautiful, almost tapestry on the wall in each of those locations. In our pre-conference visit last fall with NEASK, NEASK agreed with our self-study, which is that our, one of our priority areas was to create a vision of the graduate. And we set a goal of having that work done by December of this year. And we did, we met that goal. We completed, we had a completed draft, which was adopted by the faculty in our January faculty meeting, 61 to 0 from the high school faculty. We're really proud of the work that we have done in this work, and we were grateful for all of the support and engagement we got from the faculty, students, and community of Foxborough. And so we wanted to start by just taking you through a quick tour of our process and how we got here. Awesome.
So in October of 2022, we had presented to the NEASK committee our self-study. That self-study is what brought about the priority area that is to create a vision of a graduate and to put into its implementation form. As we started to move forward with the implementation and the creation of this vision of a graduate, we wanted to make it a very inclusive process. We wanted to ensure that we got all stakeholders, as Dr. Donovan just said. We included parents, we included current students, former students. We included townspeople, parents from the K-12 level, as well as students from the 5 through 12, from the 5 through 12 schools. And from that, we wanted them to focus on what skills, knowledge, dispositions, and understandings our Foxborough community wanted our students to have when they graduate. So that was our task, and that was our goal. These focus groups were moderated by a consultant, Dr. Ruth Whitmer, and were comprised of these stakeholder groups. From our focus groups, we then started to include the faculty in the same process that we looked at with the focus groups. We asked them what skills, dispositions, knowledge we wanted our students to have. And that then created our, our data points, the language that people were looking at. And we took all of that input, and we started to build what, and synthesize all that information and start to look at what that should look like. Oh, look, it went all the way there. All clear. All right. So by the summer of 2023, we created that initial draft. And that was first brought to the leadership team at our retreat in August. From the leadership team, it then went out to faculty meetings. We had all the faculty do the exact same activities. We wanted them to say, what is it that they see this as being? Where they wanted to see change, where they wanted to see maybe languages moved? And we shared it with all the other schools. By November, we had a second draft that we shared with the Foxborough High School faculty, collected their feedback, went back and made some changes, made some alterations based on what they saw and what they liked, what they didn't. And in December, at our faculty meeting, we shared with both district leadership team as well as our Foxborough High School faculty. And in January, they voted on the vision of a graduate, 61 to nothing. They said, "Go for it," and they are happy with the results and on board with what we have brought forward with them. So this is our overall vision of a graduate. We just want to say upfront, this is not the visual for the vision of a graduate. The graphic design part of it will get going after, after this moment. But this is what we have as far as the way in which we built out the, the elements that are included here. We want to highlight the arrows that sort of encapsulate the whole thing. In previous iterations of NEASK and in previous iterations of those visions, it was always attached to a rubric. It was attached to sort of a task that measured something. This is not that. This is a holistic approach to looking at how kids grow, at looking how kids learn, and how looking at kids are reflecting on their own growth. So these are capabilities. So we are looking at the intent to create student-friendly language, where a student who is graduating, a student in ninth grade, or 11th grade, or 12th grade as they leave, can say, "I am capable of discovering my potential. I am capable of making an impact." And then they would be able to show through behaviors, to show through their own learning, to show through various points along their way, those behaviors that are then telling us that they, they see that in themselves. So we want, we have, the principals at all the schools are looking at this as being something that is going to come with us from the K through 12 process. This is not just going to be, "Ooh, in ninth grade, you have to start discovering your potential." "In ninth grade, you should already start understand, or already have the understandings of what that might mean." So we have "Discover my potential, communicate responsibly, make an impact, think critically." And then the behaviors are underneath there. We're going to give you a short tour of them individually, but we don't want to just read a slide to you, so we just want to tell you sort of how we got to these.
Hi.
So, you know, so a big thing to keep, we'd like everyone to keep in mind here is that the language under the capabilities, it's not our intention, as Mrs. Dorico said, for students to have only an opportunity to develop these skills, which was very much a part of how the NEASK, the previous rubrics worked. These are competencies, skills, behaviors that students are going to, that we're going to look for students to develop over time from their, from their experience in our bit schools, all the way through high school, and all the co-curriculars and athletic experiences along the way. So that every student, when they graduate, has the ability to tell their own personalized story about how they're able to meet and how they achieved the vision of the graduate for Foxborough High School. And another important part of the decisions that our team made at the high school in putting this together is, like this slide in particular, there's lots of elements in here of the growth mindset, right? Which was a theme that came out in all the focus groups and from teachers and across the district, that we wanted to see the growth mindset be part of our vision of the graduate. The committee made a deliberate decision to take kind of the jargon, the educational jargon, out of these statements so that they're very clear and accessible to students and would be accessible to students really at all ages and not, and that we don't get stuck in the, you know, the text, the popular text of, of the day. So that's intentional, and you see that throughout the document.
Thank you for that. I don't mean to interrupt, but I wish I was writing fast enough, but I know Jeff's here. Please take the quote that she started, you just said something about this is a holistic approach. I wish I could re-quote that. What you just said was a perfect description of exactly how you approached this. And I wish I could repeat all the words, but I'm listening to you say that. I'm like, "Oh, my God, that's the perfect description." So it'd be a great quote for the newspaper if they can rerun. When she started saying, she used the word "a holistic approach," and there's two sentences there that you could grab, which would be great.
You can re-watch this over and over again.
Rewind the tape.
I wish I could rewind it, because as you're saying it, I'm like this, like, "Oh, my God, she just nailed it in like two sentences." So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Donovan, as well. I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
So we're on to communicate responsibly?
Communicate responsibly.
Yeah, all right. So, sorry I'm late. I just wanted to apologize for stepping in.
We were early, Dr. Wazlowski.
Which we can say, because it never happens.
We were communicating quickly.
Effectively and efficiently.
And also responsible. So looking at the behaviors here, you'll see that we have a focus on centering the audience, because we want our students to understand that audience is an essential component of effective and responsible communication. We want students to be actively listening to their audience and understanding their needs and their interests and their perspectives so that they can build and sustain meaningful connections and resolve conflicts and navigate all of the complexities of adult life. You also see a reference to technology's role in responsible communication here. Our students need multiple opportunities to use various technologies to understand how they can use them to reach diverse audiences and learn to be vigilant about the consequences of their digital interactions.
Also, as we go through these, please, if you have any questions.
Yes, please.
We didn't say that upfront, but if there's any questions about any of the language or anything that we've, please open it anytime. All right. So the next one is "Make an Impact." And much of the input that we received from our, from the students and the stakeholders that we talked about is that there was a want for students who are capable and engaging more broadly with their classroom and their school community. So that's where "Make an Impact" came out, that the information told us that the community wants our students to be capable of looking outward, to embracing a problem-solving mindset, and to create a skill set that can tackle these various problems. So that's where we have "Make an Impact," engaging with peers, looking for opportunities to, to, to look outside of just the exact work that they're doing. And think critically. Think critically is really asking our students to make sure that they are reflective learners, that they are making sure that they are getting the help that they need when they need that help, that they're utilizing the proper tools, and that they are working in their, their classroom experiences to become critical learners. You ready for the next steps?
Absolutely. So our next steps in this process is, as Mrs. Dorico said a moment ago, we do need to create some visuals, right? We, the iteration that you see here is very much a product of all the different faculty meetings and materials we've kind of went through as the year went, as the, as this process went. And we definitely need to find a template and some visuals that, that bring this vision of a graduate to life. We have waited on that to focus first on the language, but also knowing that we have an ongoing process for logos and branding and stuff, and we want to wait for those two things will eventually need to coincide. This is the first part.
So our next step is really to work on an implementation plan. Now that we have a vision, the next step is for the high school faculty to create that implementation plan. So we are going to come together and decide how the vision will be measured and how we're ensuring that the students have a variety of opportunities throughout the curriculum to learn and practice the skills that will make them capable of success. So this work will be the focus of our next few months, and we'll be using faculty meetings, department meetings, professional development time to create this plan. And our hope is to have a viable plan for implementation by May. And another important step that we need to move forward is to touch base with the rest of the schools. We really see this vision as a district vision. We got feedback from, you know, K through 12. So we really see this as all the way spanning students' time in the Foxborough school systems. And so we just want to make sure that we are working at the high school in conjunction with the rest of the schools, so that our implementation plans kind of work together. We want to make sure that there's a clear K to 12 path for our students to follow.
We are currently in the midst of a, we have a schedule committee that is examining our high school schedule. That's another aspect of our recommendation from NEASK. And this vision of the graduate, we've kind of delayed starting the schedule committee until we had a, our vision of the graduate pretty much in place so that we're building with that in mind, and that we're looking at it through that lens. Similarly, we, this process was very similar. The focus group part of it was very similar to the planning for success documents, strategic planning documents that the district went through a couple of years ago. In fact, we used the same consultant to help us do that with Ms. Whitmer, Dr. Whitmer. So we are, this, the, the data and information that we collected in building the vision of the graduate will certainly tie into that planning for success process, which will start sometime, I believe, next year, when our strategic plan, our existing document finishes, or is completed. And so with that, we'd like to take any questions that you may have. Oh, wait a minute, I forgot a slide. May I do one thing first?
Sure.
I 100% forgot to, to thank all of the, this is a, an incredible... I 100% forgot to thank all of the, this is an incredible team effort. It would, we could not be here without the, I think we invited 50 to 70 town members to be a part of the focus groups. We had selectmen, we had people on different town boards, we had employers, we had parents, we had recent graduates, we had longtime graduates, we had members of town departments, parents of elementary school students, middle school students, we had just an entire, just a huge sample of the community that formed the basis for everything we did. We're extremely grateful from them, the staff at IGO and all the bit schools, we interrupted, the Hearn and all the bit schools, we interrupted multiple faculty meetings, multiple school council meetings to get feedback along the way, and they were wonderful. Dr. Whitmer was incredible in helping us shape what those focus groups would be, so that we were respecting people's time, and also creating a plan that would get us the information that we would need to form the foundation of the process. She was incredible. The leadership team at the high school was just great over the last two years in helping us, all the department heads facilitate getting data in department meetings and helping us move stuff around as we continued to like iterate and ask questions and just make it all work. They were just incredible. And then, most importantly, our NIESC steering committee, right? So, Dr. Waz, Wazluski, and Mrs. Dorico, who are here, who are our co-chairs, who are three years into this work, and we have a letter that's due, a report due to NIESC in the spring, and they have mobilized our committee to get that done ahead of the visit next fall. They are working every week on this and have been for the last four years. It's just incredible. And then, many of our committee members are here tonight, Mrs. Barrett, who's in the back, Mr. Johansmeyer, Mr. Struble, who have been a part of that, Mrs. Borges is also a member of that committee, and they have, along with Dr. Waz and Mrs. Dorico, have spent four years, week in and week out, summers, meeting for, with the support of the district, coming together as a committee and working to pull all these pieces together. It is an incredible effort, and we're just very grateful for everything that they did and have been doing to help us in this process.
So, questions?
Questions from the committee?
Sure. Sure.
One, given that for all of you, it's not your first time through this process, Foxborough and other places, what's your take on this direction for the NIESC and the value to the town and the school in terms of taking the approach with, leading with the vision of the graduate as opposed to how they did it in olden times? Sorry, that was rude.
I would say personally and professionally, as we mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, it was really so much rubric-based, and it was, departments chose a particular rubric, and then you assigned a specific assessment that was saying, "This is, this is how we're grading you, and this is how you're being, your skill level is being assessed." I feel like, as I said at the beginning, I feel like this gives a lot more student agency and a lot of, a lot more student direction. And again, I think our implementation plan will be able to show us where we already do these things and where these things are already happening within our schools and within our, the work that we're already doing, but it will give us some opportunities to really incorporate that reflective practice for students, that they are saying, "No, you know what? I really did grow from this point to this point. Look, calculus was really hard for me, but I was able to, you know, utilize my teacher and utilize my peers, and I was able to really make such strides, and here's how, and this is what I did in order to achieve that." So, I feel like it's not just zeroing in on, "Here's your assessment, this is what you're doing." It's really asking students and to work with their teachers, to work with their peers, to work with all the resources that we have for them in order to make those strides.
Thank you.
I would just add, I feel like the new process is very community-based rather than cookie cutter, and I think we are able to see the community in this vision, and I think it's really clear, because we do so many of these things already, that it's interesting that it came out of the community, but it's already stuff that we do so often, and I think that is a really nice change in the process.
Nice. I'm, well, as a follow-up to that, I'm impressed at how plainly it reads while still being very aspirational, and the fact that you made a concerted effort to take out a lot of that ed jargon that so many of us are acculturated and frankly asked to use in our, in our closed meetings and stuff. I really appreciate that. From that, I'm curious, were, along your process, were there any of the pillars or substrands that were harder to get at, in terms of how it all coalesced?
I would say if, one of the challenges we had was simply like coming up with the language for capabilities and behaviors.
Yes.
Right? Like, that took months to get to that point, because it's not a standard, and it's not a, an expectation, or it's not an objective, and so, we, that was a, that was a process of, to get there. I think sometimes, at the beginning, we had some like real aspirational language that we, that we realized made sense to us, but did not make sense or was well-liked by some of our colleagues.
Yes.
And also was not transferable to a, to a middle school classroom. And so, that process of kind of going through all the buildings really changed the way we were, the committee was approaching that work, and also, like, I would say, the voice of the document changed dramatically. So, whether, you know, the students' eye can, as opposed to students' will, and, you know, that kind of shift happened organically, but was, it was based off of a lot of feedback, a lot of, you know, large white paper.
Lot of chart paper.
Lot of chart paper, lot of decoding notes, and kind of taking that all in and letting it distill and change. So, the iterations, there's probably, you know, five or six completely different-looking iterations of this document to get there, and I think we, the committee had to make sense of both the data, but also kind of like what it was that they were trying to tell us we needed to be. So, I think that was probably a bit unexpected.
And as much as, there was so much to sort of synthesize and bring together, it was fascinating to watch, from the focus groups to the faculty, to the leadership, how they were all saying the same thing, just in different ways. So, it was really taking, what is it that everybody sees? We all see somewhat of the same vision. We all want the same things for our kids, whether you're faculty, or parent, or community member, or student. But how are we going to get there? How are we going to take all that language that can be very different, or can be, you know, altered in certain ways, and make it so that it fits us?
Quote number two just happened. He just said, "It's not a standard or an objective, it's the behaviors and the capabilities."
And it's in the voice of the students, and I love that, and that's what it, that's what it should be. But it's not, I can imagine that wasn't what the first draft sounded like. Thanks, Dr. Waz. Anyway, thank you.
Go ahead, Rob.
So, I second what everyone has said about the, you know, just being grateful for the amount of work and time that everybody put in. What I find interesting about the document is that it clearly is a shift from where we've been. What I'm hoping that we get as further our community, when you move to the implementation part, is when you're talking about this, the passion for what you do comes through, and why you wanted this to be what it is and what you hope it to be. So, the inspiration part, not the aspiration, but the inspiration part, comes through when you're talking about it. Your eyes change, your body language changes. This document is great, but they're words on a piece of paper. What I'm hoping we find in the implementation is the same passion that you're able to communicate with your body language and your voices. That's what I hope comes through in the implementation plan, because that's where I am with this. They're great words, they're a shift, and they're one, it's a great shift to be in, but I want to hear the inspiration coming out in the implementation plan. So, I'm excited about where you go with this, and I'm really grateful for the shift that you're taking our community through as we get there.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Sarah, anything?
Oh, thank you so much.
I just thank you all again, and thank the committee members that are here. If you've never done a NIESC process, the time and commitment is truly extraordinary. But this, I, well said, this comes through with a little more life than the old, the old NIESC, which they had to change anyway, so everyone was screaming and kicking and telling them to change, so they finally changed, thank God. So, it is what it is. So, it's great, well done, and thank you all for your work and time. It's going to make a difference for all of us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. What a different process, really a hugely different process.
So improved.
So improved. Oh, my gosh. By miles improved.
Seriously, these statements, you can hang up in classrooms at any age.
And that's what really came out with, when you're talking about, "That's the document in the end," and all these different iterations of it, there were so many iterations, and they listened to that feedback all along the way, and just really going over a word at a time and making sure that it made sense. And if it didn't make sense, and people didn't understand what that would look like, then we weren't communicating, they weren't communicating it the way they were intended, intending to.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much. Next is Dr. Dunham's back up again for an update on the process for selection of the new Foxborough FHS mascot emblem logo.
Wonderful. Thank, so thank you again for the opportunity to be here. We want to take a moment to share with the committee the work that we've been doing over the last few months, and a potential framework for, that we've developed to help us meet the objectives set by the committee with your vote in October, and a timeline to achieve that. And so, I want to kind of take you through the process, and we thought we'd start just by, starting by kind of what our task, oh, I'm in the wrong deck here. Perfect. So, our task is obviously to, two parts, right? It's the former committee, for the purposes of researching, imagining, and proposing a new official mascot emblem or logos from the school committee to be approved by this coming August, and that it, that this new emblem, mascot, or logo cannot have any Native American or indigenous person, pictures, representations, or iconography as a part of it. So, that's really the framework that we're working with here. And a key aspect of this, obviously, is the August 24th, 24 date, and the requirements set forth in the motion about what can and cannot be, or excuse me, what cannot be included, right, as a part of it. So, our work to date, in October and November, Dr. Burrows and I spent some time consulting with other districts who have been through this process recently, about their process, how they went about doing it, in particular, how they constructed the committees, and how they interacted with school committee along the way, and what their communication strategies were, and how they went about doing it, and sort of the unique, to try to understand the unique process for each district, right? And so, for us, we took that information and then began a series of conversations with the school council at the high school, our leadership group, which is the department heads in the high school, and our assistant principals. Dr. Burrows took it to a coffee with the superintendent. In January, since we've returned from break, I've met with student council executive board officers, the superintendent's advisory council. Last week, I've met with captains at the high school and members of our senior ink and graphic design two classes about this. And in each of those conversations, Nathan's been a part of, I think, three or four of them along the way, just because of all the different roles he plays in the high school. And in all of these meetings, I've come with the task, right, which is essentially the motions that were passed by the school committee, and looking for input on what the committee should look like, in particular, what the role of students should be, and how do we engage the community in the process, and to just get input, right? And so, like an underlying theme for, in all of these conversations, has been a goal that we want the process to be like entirely transparent and laid out, credible. I understand that, obviously, there's a lot of, there were a lot of feelings about the decision that the committee made in the fall. There was a lot of discussion within the community at the time, and that remains to some degree within the student body, I've heard over the last couple of weeks. And the work of this committee, what my hope is, is that this is not, the work of this committee is to achieve the goal. I do not, what I've been saying all, time and time again, is my, I want people on the committee, and this is, and this is how I feel personally, who are committed to doing the work. It does not matter to me the position that people had at the time and how they feel about the vote. I want people who are willing to work through, this is a very challenging timeline, and this is a very important task. And so, to put the time in, especially the students, and that we're credible, and that we can communicate about that along, throughout our process. Every time we had one of these conversations, we got just a significant amount of information, but there were some common themes that came back, and those themes were, across all the conversations, that the, the composition of the committee should be high school students, parents, and faculty and staff. In large part, that was because if there are only a couple of parents or a couple of students, and it was a K-12 committee, then that, then the representation of high school students wouldn't be there. That there has to be opportunities for students and the community members to provide input at the outset of the process and on designs this spring. Our current seniors want to be a part of the process. That has a definite impact on the timeline, because they finish school in mid-May, and so we want to be done ahead of that. And that students really want multiple opportunities to provide input before the committee makes a recommendation to the school committee. These were not, I would say, like any feedback or any themes that kind of develop over a series of eight or nine different conversations with groups of kids and parents and school councils. They were not universal, but they were by far the most common and reoccurring, reoccurring So, what we have here is a, I would say, proposal, a framework for what this committee could look like. And this is based off of all the different conversations that I've had, and Dr. Burrows have had with students, and Dr. Burrows has participated in those as well. One of the big reoccurring themes is that students wanted to be a part of it, and that the committee should be largely made of students, because as the students would say, they're the ones wearing the logo or emblem on their clothing, and they want a big, they want a part of the decision-making process. So, in speaking with the students, one of the ideas that came up was kind of creating groups of kids to make up that committee, having a class officer from student council, a selected officers in their grade be a part of that, one from each grade. There's a slight math error here, and I apologize. So, we had a captain's council meeting last week, and one of the pieces of feedback was that they wanted more captains to be a part of that process, because of the amount of teams that we have, and that the logo and emblem is a big part of our athletic program. Makes total sense, right? And then, we have, in the high school, a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge in our graphic design program and our senior ink students, who design emblems and logos for people inside the district and all over the world as part of, in Ms. Harkot's class. And I think it's important that we have students who know actually how to do this work, and who know what to look for in making a design, who know how to set criteria for a design. And that institutional knowledge and having that within the student representate, within the student body of that committee, came out of something that was important and also be valuable. And then, the next part is, you know, a composition of parents, faculty, staff, and coaches. I have made the joke a couple of times, that some of our staff at the high school are also parents and also coaches. You know, depending upon, Mr. Kizer, I've made this joke before, depending upon the hour, he could be all but, you know, of the criteria provided here, he can be everything but a student and administrator, but he can alternate between the other ones on a, on a 30-minute interval. a 30-minute interval. So I think, I don't know that it, in soliciting people to be a part of the committee, I don't know that choosing, identifying a strict number of two parents or three parents or two coaches or, you know, that that necessarily is, is, I think we want some flexibility. I think we want to make sure that we have everybody and that each one of those groups that you identified is represented. But my concern is that the committee jumps to like 30 or 35 people and then, and then it's like difficult to accomplish our, the goals, right? And then myself and Mr. Cusack would largely be there to facilitate the process and to, make sure that the tasks are prepared, that the committee meetings are prepared for and that we're meeting our objectives as far as timelines and working with the committee to prepare and distribute communication along the way.
Do you want questions now or do you want questions at the end?
Whatever. Sure, absolutely.
I think questions up.
Okay. So I just have two questions on this, on the proposed composition. With, did you consider including any members of the current eighth grade class since they would be coming to the high school next year and would therefore be a part of, assume it would be part of the students that would be adopting this? And second, I don't see any representation specifically from another large community within the school, which is the music program. Is that in?
Yeah, so those are two great questions. So the eighth grade, the conversation about, should we include eighth graders, absolutely came up. In fact, one of the first conversations we had was about, should we, should we include the eighth graders and do the seniors want to participate or not? And should we include eighth graders, you know, if the seniors don't, should we include eighth graders in the process? I think when we go a little bit further, with, one of the, one of the, I would say recurring pieces of advice that came back is that we're going to need input from, from a lot of people. And once we kind of open the door to how big, how much input we get, there's a way to get feedback from, from the eighth grade students and there's a way to get feedback from the parents of middle school students or elementary school students on the, on the designs. So there's a way for them to be included in it. But a role on the committee was something that we did not really talk about because we wanted to keep it within the, the high school, the current high school students and parents and coaches.
Okay.
That makes, if that makes sense.
The decision makes sense, I'm not sure the why, but that's okay. If you had a why, then that's fine, we can, I can, I can live with that.
And then, please forgive me, I forget the second.
The second was about music.
Music. So we have students in the music program who are class officers and who are captains and who are students in our art program. I think it's one of the strengths of the high school is that we have captains and athletes who are in our art studios and who are in the graphic design work. When I went to this class, the graphic design senior ink class, there were three captains, current captains, as students in the class. So I felt as though there was enough overlap in these different groups of kids that we didn't need to specify one student from NHS, two students from music, two kids from Be the Change, one, like that we, once we got beyond kind of a couple of key demographics of students, we would need to start including all these different groups and that that would, again, get us to a group that was really large.
Sure.
So that was the thinking there.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. So moving forward to the role. So this, this is the language from, from your motion, right, which is to propose a mascot emblem and/or logo for the school, to the school committee. One of the first tasks of the committee is going to be to decide which one of those three, or how many of those three, are we going to pursue because each one of them is different. That would be a decision that would leave up to that group to decide. Similarly, one of the things that came out of many of the public meetings, forums that you, that the committee hosted, as well as open public comment here, is that there was a, people would often come up and speak about what being a warrior meant to them. And I think that as sort of a, a visioning exercise, but kind of gathering feedback about what it is being a Foxborough warrior means and getting that information from all of our students to kind of generate ideas for the student body or the community, whatever, however the committee decides to do it, in soliciting potential logos or emblems or designs or proposals for mascots. They're also going to need to determine criteria. And what I mean by criteria is in, in collecting submissions, they'd have to come in digitally and they'd have to have certain file sizes, certain colors, right? We have, we have a blue that we use on almost everything. We have a gold that we use on almost everything. So establishing that criteria that when submissions come back in, to really kind of be considered, it would have to meet those specs, for lack of a better word. And we, that would be a task of the committee to set what those are. And then to communicate the findings, okay, so, excuse me, I said this, communicate the findings of, of what it means to be a warrior and solicit submissions. So there is, and from student, from the student body, that was the recommendation of many of our students. That was not a, a recommendation that was like 90% of our students. There is a concern that there may not be enough students in the high school who are willing or have the time to invest in potentially creating a logo and that, and opening that up to the committee, to maybe the town, or opening up to include students at other schools. So that would be a decision that the committee would have to make. We then have to gather feedback from our students, gather comments from our parents, gather comments from other schools in the district or community and find a way in which the community as a whole can interact with those samples and provide feedback and also determine how that wants, how the feedback wants to come back, whether it's a Likert scale or whether it's a rank order or whether it's a, you know, feedback on the design, constructive feedback on the design that may go back to the person who created it. One of the things that students said often was that they want, they do, the students have concerns about peer pressure and voting and so they would like the process to be anonymous so that when the samples go out, they're not, no one's quite sure who, who did what. And we'd like to, the committee would have to set a framework for how we do that. Gather the, gather the comments and then take all that data that we collect and pare down to finalists and whatever finalists mean, whether it's two or three or, or something else, and then make, ultimately make a recommendation to you. What I've said in all these conversations is that there is not a existing logo in a draw that we're going to pull out and hand out to the committee and, and say this, this is it. We're proposing a process here that starts with a clean sheet and, and, and an empty canvas that kids can design from. And then provide transparent communication with the community as we go through our, through that work. So this is a timeline that we think will allow us to, to achieve our goal. Working backwards, really starting with the May 6th, that's our, kind of like a hard timeline for getting data from our current seniors. So we feel like the final collection period has to be in and around that week. And so to work backwards, so to, to build this, we worked backwards. So we hope to start the committee in early February, the first week of February, have our first meeting, get out that warrior visioning exercise to the community with probably two, maybe three questions at most, get that data back, get it out to the, to seek submissions in early February, or excuse me, early March, and then by the end of March, to put out the renderings that we have, the submissions that we have for public comment. Get that data back, identify the finalists, and then by May, put out a second round of finalists to our high school students because what the high school students have said in all these different conversations is they want, they want to be the people to provide the last feedback. Ultimately, the committee is, is, will be the organization that makes the, the final recommendation based on the, the construction of the motion, right? And so that will happen, you know, on or before June 5th to be a part of the June 11th school committee meeting. At that point, we anticipate needing to get a graphic design company to come up with the final iteration of that document, of that design. So it could be that, and for two reasons. The first is it could be that our student is graduating and the process, they're not able to actually finish the process. And the second is that we need to create almost a style guide or multiple versions of that document that work in color, that would work for a uniform, that would work if silk screened on blue, that would work if silk screened on a white, you know, so that we have all those templates, so that teams and booster organizations and the school for our letterhead and all those different functions that we have, the files that we can use to quickly do that in a uniform way. So we do expect that that work would come out or that we'd be ready to do that in June and July and hopefully have those, the final renderings by, and ready to go by the end of August. And so in closing here, what I wanted to, what we wanted to ask really is to see if you are okay with this framework, right? In particular, that the committee sets the, the selection criteria once formed. And by that, again, I mean the color scheme, the file size, the, whether it's going to be an emblem or a logo or a mascot or all three or two of three. The committee will be made up of current FHS students, staff, coaches, parents, as previously specified, and that stakeholder data will be gathered from around the district in March, on the end of March and early April. And then a final kind of question almost is if we bring, if the committee brings a design to you in June and, and you approve that design, would you like us to come back to approve it a second time or after having a vendor, a graphic design company finish that, finish the iterations of it? Or are you okay with us moving forward with that? And the reason I ask is because you have a meeting, there's not a meeting until late August.
Correct.
So it's a timeline issue between when we could start to get stuff out and get stuff to, you know, everything from, from letterhead and beyond. So that's really the heart of that, of that question.
Members?
I'll start.
Can I just speak up to this?
Yes, Sarah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Please.
Sorry.
Okay. I, I just, these questions, this, and I, I'm Dr. Donovan, I'm not, no disrespect, but this was on the agenda as information only and these questions do seem like something, if we're going to answer these questions, that seems like a motion or a vote. So I, I did, that, I think that this is something that needs to be thought about and discussed and if we need to answer in a formal way, I don't think it should be tonight.
I agree that if we're going to, that we, on the agenda is information only and that we should not make any votes on anything this evening. So I'm in agreement with you, Sarah.
We can discuss it, though.
Correct.
Correct.
Are you comfortable discussing tonight, Sarah? I don't know, I don't know if you can hear us well, we're having, I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
We, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We, we had the vote and we gave, it was a very specific committee requirement, but personally, I think that this is Dr. Donovan's, I don't, I don't think that, I think this should be student-driven, let's put it that way, student and faculty-driven on the wants and the needs and the desires of the students with him at the helm. Like I, I just personally don't know that we're qualified to answer for the voices of the students. Some of us have students, but we have one student, there's 2,500. So I trust Dr. Donovan personally to represent the wants and the needs, everything you put forth, you put a lot of time, effort, energy, and thought into making a fair and balanced committee that is comprised of representing the wants and the needs of the students, the faculty. You've been very thoughtful about it. If you're asking if I thought you do, did a good job and not asking for a formal vote, yes, I think you've done a great job. I trust you implicitly. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments?
To Dr. Donovan's last question, I'll agree with what, what Sarah has said by saying, if per our motion, a recommendation comes forward and it's got all the framing and all of that out and it, it still holds to the structure that you've put out, I don't personally see a need for a second approval vote beyond that.
Yeah. I think, I'll just second, I appreciate what Sarah said. I appreciate all the work and the thoughtfulness that has gone into getting you to this point. As you started at the beginning, this, this had the potential to be a rocky road and you're navigating that well to this point. It has always been my desire when we started this process, as I said, when we took the vote. I think it's exciting to let our students and our school community imagine what they want to represent them. And I think this is a way to do that and it's very effective. You know, it's thoughtful, it is a condensed timeline, it's aggressive, I appreciate that. I certainly hope that you and your committee, if they feel like the timeline becomes what's driving this and we're not getting, you're not getting the result that you want, but you're doing it because of a timeline, then I hope you feel comfortable coming back and saying, we need more time because, for whatever reason, I mean, you established a timeline and I think that's, it's, it's good to do that, but the process and the result is more important to me personally than the timeline. And I want you to feel comfortable and I want your committee to feel comfortable saying, we need more time to come up with a result that we really feel like want, we want to represent us. That'd be the only thing that I would want you to walk away from tonight from me.
Anything else?
No, I just appreciate your careful consideration and, and an attempt to try and make this as fair and impartial as possible. It's tough. It, it was tough and I really do appreciate, and it sounds like you considered all options on your committee. I'm comfortable with how things are. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you for the update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well done.
So I'm sorry, but, because I think you, did you feel like you got the answers that you need or you feel like you not, did not get the answers that you need?
I think there's really kind of one very kind of technical question, which is whether or not, as a committee, if we come back with a recommendation in June
Okay.
and you adopt that, do you then want to see it again in August to make a final decision?
Which is what I thought you wanted, so I think what we need to do is...
That's really a very small question compared to the whole framework.
So I think what we need to do is at some point make that an action item for a future meeting so that we actually officially vote on it, say that you have an answer.
But do we need to do that? Can we do it when he makes the recommendation in June? Like when you bring it to us in June, say, this is what we're showing you, do you wish to, and then at that point, we make the action item with something in mind as opposed to an abstract thought right now?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, I just think, so we need to be mindful when it gets on the agenda in June, that that becomes an action requested, not an IO.
Hundred percent.
For, I don't know, okay, that's, yeah.
But it will be an action item.
Yes. Thank you. That was well said. That's exactly what my point was. Thank you for wording it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that'll work. I'm comfortable with that.
I think it was a good process. We'll outline it.
It's a very good, robust process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm grateful for all the students, staff that have been a part of it, school council, it's been, it's been wonderful, so.
Great. Thank you.
It shows that you've had many hands, thoughtful hands and minds in on this, so thank you.
And he doesn't get to leave.
Doesn't get to leave, now we've got a program of studies.
Can we get you some water or anything?
I'm good, it's back there.
Do you know you were getting in for like a triple header tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Invite the next, I'm gonna switch seats, though. Invite our next group up here for just a conversation, program of studies. So, again, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to introduce some of these folks up here. Andy Servideo, who you know is our Director of Guidance, Dr. Wazaluzki, who's our Department Head in English, and Dr. Matronik, who is our Department Head in Science. And so, we have a couple proposals for changes to our program of studies, which come before the committee. I want to start by offering, Mr. Servideo, just an opportunity for us to talk, share a little bit about the program of studies document as a whole and our course selection process.
Thank you. So I'm gonna talk just a little bit about when we started program of studies, to where we are now, and what it looks like for the next couple of months into course selection and scheduling, all that kind of stuff. So I'll just kind of give you a kind of rough timeline. So every year, we, we take a look at the program of studies document and see what needs to be edited, you know, small little things, but then also some kind of, some larger changes, and that usually starts kind of around like Halloween-ish, so we're just wrapping up quarter one, we're already talking about the following year. And it takes a little bit of time to kind of go through, and each department gets to kind of say, "Okay, I want to change this little wording here, a little wording there, I want to add a new course," and we, we do that for a couple of months, so that's kind of where we're at right now, as far as the basic edits, department heads edit some things, I edit some things, and any new courses, all that. So we'll put the program of study aside for a second, and now we'll kind of talk about course selection and kind of bring it back. So course selection, we started the process with the eighth grade students a couple of weeks ago, we're actually going down, the council's going down to the Ahern Middle School tomorrow, and we're gonna actually sit with the students there, go through the course requests, make sure they're getting everything inputted into Power School. Couple of weeks later, we'll be back at the high school, be in science and English and social studies classes, give them the program of studies presentation to students, having them be pretty mindful of their, their selections for the following year. Portal opens up, they have a couple of weeks to be able to put their own requests in, and then after February vacation, they'll be meeting with their counselor individually. So one of the things that we've kind of said to students over, over the years is it's really important for students to have ownership in their course selection. There are certain courses that a student's gonna take, and that's it, and that's fine, they don't have to read necessarily the program of studies description about that course. But when it comes to elective offerings and certain course levels, if they're gonna think of making a jump from CP to honors, or honors to AP, we want them to be mindful of those differences and understand what they're actually signing up for, for an entire school year. So the, the program of studies document is about 90 pages, and I don't expect anyone to read 90 pages of the program of studies. But I do expect students, if they're like, "I'm interested in this course, what is it about?" Read the three-sentence description to know what it's about. We also have on the Foxborough High School website, in the guidance section, we have elective videos that our, our teachers and department heads have made over the past year, so, so it's kind of a quick little snapshot for 30 seconds, a minute, a couple minutes to describe what the course is all about, so students have a better idea of what they're kind of signing up for. One of the, the things I've said for years is, this has happened multiple times in my career, the first few days of school, I'd have a student come fly into my office and, "I need to drop anatomy," like what, wow, what's going on? You have to dissect things. Yes. In big bold letters, mandatory dissection. Like you just have to, you just have to know what you're signing up for. So we just want students to really be mindful of the courses they're going into, know the expectations, listen to their teachers and their recommendations. Their teachers know kind of the vertical alignment of what's coming the following year, they know where the strengths and weaknesses are of each student, so when they're making a course recommendation, we do really say, "You should really be listening to those teachers, because they really understand what's happening." If there is a disagreement, we want them to have that conversation, and there's, there's overrides and all that, but it's really about understanding the, the teachers and where they're coming from. So we, we'll do the course selection process for students at the high school, pretty much the, most of the month of March, we wrap up kind of late March, and then after that, it's really department heads, and Dr. Donovan, myself, we kind of go through the different course tallies, and what courses are gonna run, how many sections do we need, who's teaching what, and then the schedule gets built. So this, this process starts pretty early, because we are so complex at the high school with semester courses and full-year courses and every-other-day courses, and we're trying to get common planning time and certain periods off and co-teaching, so there's a lot of logistical parameters, and to do that all takes a lot of time, so we start this process kind of early. And kind of, that brings us back to where we are with the program of studies and, and you. So when we go through and we, we make any adjustments or any additions we want to present to you as a school committee, we're pretty much at the, the final version of the rough draft, and we just want you to kind of hear the, both the, a couple of different courses from our, our different departments and see if there's any questions there, and then just general questions from me about course selection, scheduling, any of that kind of stuff. Any questions before I kick it over to our department heads, vote for me? All right, so maybe we'll start with Dr. Wazaluzki in English.
Hello again. We're proposing in English to add an additional elective course that's based on myths, fairytales, and legends. It's been a wildly popular unit in our creative writing class in the last couple of years, and Mrs. Bishop, who has taught creative writing for a number of years, decided that she wanted to actually make it an elective course, because she thinks that it will give students an opportunity to kind of explore myths, fairytales, and legends at a more deeper level. As high school seniors, they can delve into kind of the stories and really think about what it tells them about the cultures that they were written in, and what's important to them, and then give them a chance to kind of really immerse themselves in fairy tales and imagination and that kind of world.
Do you have any questions about?
Any questions about that course?
I think it sounds fun.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, it is a nine-to-12 course. It's, so our senior elective program, seniors can elect to take two English electives or a full-year AP course, but most of our electives are also offered to nine-to-12, or nine-to-11 as well.
And this is a semester?
This is a semester class, yes.
So it's offered to nine-to-12, but it would count for seniors?
For seniors, it would count as their English credit, yeah. Or half of their English credit, yeah.
Any more questions on that one?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds cool.
And then in science?
And then in science, we have one new proposed course, which is the Project Lead the Way Introduction to Engineering Design, and you'll remember hearing from me, I think, two or three times now, about the changes per the curriculum review last year, and one of the things that was the recommendation was to begin integrating these Project Lead the Way courses as electives at the high school. We were lucky enough, and that's one of the major changes you'll see in the descriptions, to be, already have a course on the books that students were signing up for, two half-year courses, but environmental sustainability and environmental change, yep, that already were mostly aligned with the Project Lead the Way environmental sustainability goals, and so we were able to adopt that this year, and the changes to the language now follow in the program of studies, that those are now Project Lead the Way courses on the books. And then this new one is a Project Lead the Way course for engineering design, which does not take away from the existing engineering course that we have, but it gives kids an opportunity to explore use of CAD, and to do some reverse engineering and explore how materials, you know, different materials have different functions in different settings, and when they could make responsible changes in order to improve a product, or to improve its environmental impact, and also that they get to build something that actually goes and is automated, which is exciting. Those are fun things in science.
Thank you.
Is there a particular age or group of folks you expect would be counseled to take this as part of their course of study throughout the high school? I mean, is it?
It's open nine-to-12.
Yep.
All of them are open nine-to-12. I would say that as we progress through the Project Lead the Way courses and make the additions, it would be, eventually it would be recommended that you, that's the direction you think you want to go, you might want to take the elective in Introduction to Engineering Design early, because while one Project Lead the Way course doesn't actually require another one as a prerequisite-
Right.
-there's an order where they can get more out of it, and we could set them up to get the most out of a particular sequence without requiring that sequence.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Sarah, good. Rob, good. Is there anything coming out of the program of studies, or are these just the two additions only?
That's it, just the two additions.
So nothing's being taken out to make room for these or anything like that? These are just additional electives that students can select?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So I think, do we need a-
It's not listed, it's listed as-
So, in your memo, it's asking for you to approve these courses, but on the agenda, it says information only, but it does ask in your memo for your approval, so that's gonna be the will of the committee. If, if you're willing to approve these tonight, Dr. Donovan did have that, that would be our mistake in putting the information only and not the actions required there, but he did ask for approval in the memo.
And it does say that, I'm just, I'm reiterating what you just said, our first sentence of our document says, "I recommend for your approval," so.
So I motion that we accept the proposed changes to the English and Science Department programs to study for the 2024-25 school year.
Seconded by Brent, motion by Rob, seconded by Brent.
Any additional discussion?
Aye.
Yes, oh, aye. There we go. No additional discussion.
Go with it, Sarah, go with it.
Starting with Sarah, aye. Michelle?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Richard, aye. Five-zero vote for your additional courses. Thank you for all the work on this. Thank you for spending all the time integrating these. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the scheduling process, too. It's hard work. I don't think people knows what goes into a scheduling-
It's a lot. I, I like it, which is-
Which is really good.
Something that's crazy.
Which we can counsel you on another time, but still.
He loves it.
We're glad that you like it.
He's underselling it.
If there's one thing I don't miss, is building schedules, so. It's like a puzzle, but yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. I think those, those courses sound pretty cool, too. Awesome. Thank you for your time tonight, and everyone, for staying. Next on the agenda is the first reading of our policies, and we have our policy subcommittee here that's leading the way.
So, before we get started, as our, as is our practice and requirement, when we are revising a policy, we do a full read-through of the initial draft of the proposed changes. This evening, while there are four policies listed as first readings on the agenda, we are only, we are only intended to propose three policies for review this evening, so we will not be reviewing a policy JJE, the co-curricular and extracurricular activity policy this evening. The subcommittee does have some additional questions for administration and council on that specific policy. The other three policies, Brent, and you can fill in after this, the language that we are updating or requesting updates to is really to bring us in line with current requirements from the Commonwealth and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I just have a quick question. What determines which policies that you go, I'm not on the policy committee, and I've never done this before, so.
What determines which policies we review?
Yes.
One, just our desire. Two, I mean, like, anybody on our committee can propose, but periodically, DESI will do reviews and come up with recommendations for policy change. MASCE will also have recommendations for policy changes, things that were either changed in state law, or that an interesting case came out that prompts, prompts a review.
Okay. So it's not like you have to read the whole-
The MIIA.
Say it again?
The MIIA, the Massachusetts Insurance, that Mr. Yugno's brought up multiple times, will request updates on policies to give us an overall credit in the district on insurance.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think it's a great question, because it's, it's just a range of things that can come to it, but definitely, I'm glad you mentioned MASCE as well. We, we do get, you know, throughout, over time, we get those MASCE things that said, that say, "Hey, we're realizing language in many policies looks like this," and then it makes us reflect, so.
Okay. Okay, so which policy would you like to begin with? As a first reading?
We can, so if we go in the order on the agenda, we'll start with JFE-1.
Yep, do that.
Brent, you wanna read?
Yeah, I'll start reading. All right.
So first, yeah, first, go ahead.
No, it's fine. And then to reiterate, as people listen, and we'll, we'll say this again at the end of our read-through, these first two that we'll read with school admissions are really having to do with our policies as written, were not in line with Commonwealth law, so it's, we consider it kind of a housekeeping thing, where we're bringing our language up to date, but that's, and that, that of the, that of the Commonwealth, so here we go. School, sorry, File JFE-1, School Admissions, Purpose and Construction of 603 CMR 26.00. Section 1, 603 CMR 26.00 is promulgated to ensure the right of access to public schools of the Commonwealth and equal enjoyment of opportunities, advantages, privileges, and courses of studies at such schools without regard, without regard to race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or national origin. And then, 603 CMR 26.00 shall be liberally construed for these purposes. Section 2, The obligation to comply with 603 CMR 26.00 is not obviated or alleviated by any local law or rule or regulation of any organization, club, athletic, or other league or association which would limit the eligibility or participation of any student on the basis of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or national origin. School admissions, next section. All public schools in the Commonwealth shall admit students without regard to race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, disability, sexual orientational now, or national origin. This includes, but is not limited to, the regional vocational, technical schools, elementary, secondary, trade, and selective academic high schools. Section 2. The national citizenship of any applicant shall not be a criterion for admission to any public school, nor shall national citizenship be a factor in the assignment or availability of courses of study or extracurricular activities. Section 3. Any students used as part of, sorry, any standards, rather, used as part of the admissions process to any public school, including but not limited to testing, the use of recommendations, interviewing, as referred to in 603 CMR 26.02 subsection 1, shall not discriminate on the basis of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or national origin. Limited English speaking ability, there's a typo in just, but speaking ability, as defined by MGL C71A, shall not be used as a deterrent to or limitation on admissions. Section 4. If admission to any school, including but not limited to selective academic high schools, regional vocational, technical schools, and trade schools is dependent upon the participation or completion of courses or programs which were previously limited to the students of one sex, or if close scrutiny reveals that access mechanisms or other administrative arrangements have limited the opportunities of any racial, ethnic, or religious group of students to participate in such programs, then those criteria must be abolished. Section 5, the last section. Nothing in 603 CMR 26.00 shall be construed as to control the interpretation of or interfere with the implementation of ST 1965 C641, as amended by ST 1974 C636, providing for the elimination of racial imbalance in public schools, all rules and regulations promulgated in respect thereto, and all court and administrative decisions construing or related thereto. That just rolls off the tongue. Legal references, MGL 151G 76-1, 76-5, 76-15, 76-15A, and our favorite, 603 CMR 26.01, 26.02, and 26.03. Policy was last, or this policy was originally adopted on the March 24th, 2008, and this is what we're trying to amend. That was fun.
Thank you, well read.
Thank you, nice job.
Yeah.
So usually I do it in a Scottish accent. So usually I do it in a Scottish accent.
So just a reminder, when we vote on this, our policy or our practice has been that neither Brent nor I would make the motion nor second the motion to move this to second route, just to move this to second reading. We would expect that to come from, hope that would come from either Sarah, Michelle, or Richard.
Fine.
Okay.
Right, because if we're bringing it to you, it's already kind of like left our policy subcommittee. Do you want to do the next one?
I'll do the next one.
You can do it in a Scottish accent?
I'll try. Okay. So, policy file JF-E-2, School Admissions. Admission to courses of study. Section 1. Each and every course of study offered by a public school shall be open and available to students regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or national origin. Nothing herein shall be construed to prohibit the use of prerequisite requirements that have been demonstrated to be essential to success in a given program. However, if participation in a course of program is dependent upon completion of a prerequisite which was previously limited to students of one sex, or if close scrutiny reveals that access mechanisms or other administrative arrangements have limited the opportunities of any class of students to participate in such prerequisites, then all members of the previously excluded group shall be given the opportunity to acquire the prerequisites or be allowed to enter the program without such prerequisites. If it cannot be shown that a prerequisite is essential for success in a given program, the prerequisite shall be abolished. Section 2. The determination of what courses or units of study are to be required of any student shall also be made without regard to the race, color, sex, gender identity, national origin, disability, sexual orientation, or religion of that student. Section 3. The scheduling of students into courses or units of study shall not be done on the basis of sex, gender identity, color, race, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or national origin. Section 4. Each student, regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, national origin, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or limited English speaking ability, shall have equal rights of access to courses of study and other opportunities available through the school system of the city or town in which he or she resides, along with appropriate bilingual instruction and programs or other curriculum offerings of a supportive nature, such as appropriate remedial programs. Section 5. Nothing in 603 CMR 26.O3 shall be construed to prevent particular segments of a program of instruction from being offered separately to each sex when necessary in order to respect personal privacy. Legal references, MGL 151G 76.1, 76.5, 76.15, 76 ISA, 603 CMR 26.01, 26.02, 26.03. And this policy was also adopted on March 24, 2008.
Well done.
And again, the changes are in just bringing this, bringing our policy in line with following the law of the Commonwealth. So they updated the law at Commonwealth level, and that's triggering us. We update our policies to be in line with that.
Great. One more?
Okay. You're looking at me like it's...
No, no, if you want to split it, I'm happy to split it with you. If you want to do it, it's all good.
All right. I'll start. File JLCD, Administering Medicines to Students. Medication may not be administered to students while at school unless such medicine is given to them by the school nurse, acting under specific written request of the parent or guardian and under written directive of the student's personal physician. See below for exceptions. Medicine that needs to be given during a field trip will only be dispensed by the nurse and administered by the principal or their designee. When the school nurse is not present, a student who needs medication during school, during the school day may be called to the office at a scheduled hour and reminded, underlined, by the secretary to take the medicine, to take the medicine following a self-medication administration plan approved by the school nurse. This provision only applies when the correct dosage of the medication has been placed in an individual container clearly marked with the student's name, the dosage to be administered, and the time and/or conditions under which the medicine is to be taken. In addition, the student must be able to recognize the medicine that he or she is taking. No one but the school nurse and those listed in the medical administration plan acting within the above restriction may give any medication to any student. All medication will be administered in accordance with the district's medication administration protocols and procedures, which is a separate, lengthy, and highly specific document that's also part of the school's governing documents. Sorry, that was my aside. Exceptions. The school district shall, through the Foxborough Public Schools Nurse Leader, register with the Department of Public Health and train personnel in the use of epinephrine auto-injectors. Foxborough Public Schools may, in conjunction with the school physician and the school nurse leader, stock nasal nalexone, or Narcan. And trained medical personnel and first responders may administer nasal nalexone to individuals experiencing life-threatening opiate overdose in a school setting. If the Foxborough Public Schools wishes medical personnel to train non-medical staff in administration of nasal nalexone, the Foxborough School Committee shall vote to approve the training, and the superintendent shall ensure that medical personnel have a written protocol which complies with the medical directives and regulations from the Department of Public Health. Following consultation with the school nurse, students who fall into the following exceptions may self-administer medications. There are four. One, students with asthma or other respiratory diseases may possess and administer prescription inhalers. Two, students with cystic fibrosis may possess and administer prescription enzyme supplements. Three, students with diabetes may possess and administer glucose monitoring tests and insulin delivery systems. Number four, students with life-threatening allergies may possess and administer epinephrine. Legal references, MGL 7154B, Department of Public Health Regulations 105, CMR 210.00, 244 CMR 3.00. Cross-references, life-threatening allergy. Policy was first adopted on March 24, 2008. That meeting must have been a hoot. It was revised on April 25, 2011. It was revised and approved again in September 19, 2016. And we are updating this particularly with removing references to EpiPens and saying epinephrine, because the EpiPen is a trademark name. And epinephrine is the medicine. So that's what brought this one forward. That's really the only change.
And the addition of that one line, which is standard, which we've been doing with all of our policies.
Yes, thank you, Rob.
Which is specifics go into the protocol and procedure documents, because they don't require committee approval of the policy. So this brings this policy in line with what we've been doing for the past few years in other policies.
Correct.
And if these change, someone's going to say the same thing, because the meeting date's going to be the same for the same three policies that you just got a hoot out of.
Right. And so, yeah, our process here is, just a reminder, because it's been, what, a year since we looked at policies? We do a first reading. If committee wishes to move it to a second reading, then they recommend that, and we vote on it. And then, if there's no changes between now and then, if the committee doesn't see needs for any, then at the second reading, we can choose to waive the second reading, and then we can vote. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, I think it's all right. Yeah, so I think it's, this was just an information first reading, and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, as a second reading.
Questions on any of these from the committee members, or any requests that the policy subcommittee reconsider or look more closely?
I think you're exactly what you needed to do, and the nice line on the protocols, that's a great point, too. You know, as we touch these, to try to send them, send the information, protocols and actions to where it goes.
And thank you for, to Dr. Berdus for helping us get into these, and for Dr. Burrows for working hand in hand with Rob and I in the policy subcommittee to do this.
And we'll just, the fourth one, we'll just let that, you know, you can inform us to when, when it kicks back next, when you need to. Thank you. Great. Final agenda item, we're running on time, 8:30. Notification to Community Events Discussion. I think this came up at the last committee meeting about discuss this topic item, and so we'll open it up for discussion.
I think, yeah, my understanding was just, it was just a clarification, because at one... Sorry, that's my mic. At one point, we in the committee, we said, "Oh, let's just, let's stop doing announcements and streamline the process." And then, we continued doing it under the rationale that Ms. Ladani had said, and others, that she's a, well, that our committee has standing representation on the rec board. And then, so that was the question, because it was kind of our practice being in conflict of something we said we would do or did not, you know, maybe we weren't as thoughtful when we said, "Let's do away with certain announcements." So I believe that's why that's on the agenda. Is that correct, to everyone's memory?
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, so again, we, my, my recollection is that we discuss not having this as a specific agenda item, recurring agenda item. And, but it is a recurring agenda item. And, you know, so do we need to revisit that vote that we had made, you know, several meetings ago? We also have dropped from our agenda what was, what was a standing agenda item, which is just Other Matters, which was our opportunity to ask for things to be brought to future meetings, to, you know, bring up any other topics that might be of general interest to the committee or recognition of events that might have happened that we didn't have another place for on the agenda.
So long as we didn't, so long as we didn't vote on any of those?
Correct.
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 Correct. So I guess what I'm really asking for is clarification on, did the discussion that we had several meetings ago and the agreement that we reached then, what happened to that, and where do we go from here?
Yeah, just clarifying, right?
Yeah. Other members, where you'd like to go from here?
You, I just want to, I just want to speak to this, because number one, I guess it's a town, it's like in the town bylaws that someone in the school committee should be on the recreation board as well. So I take that very seriously, and I go to the rec meetings, and I participate, and I try to bring that back to the school committee. It was under Other Matters, and I believe that it was brought up by other boards and other people, that Other Matters was kind of broad. I thought the discussion happened more about the agenda. And, Richard, you offered the solution of community updates, which is what Other Matters really was, where everyone kind of went around and took a turn updating people in the community. So I thought it leveled the playing field and made it a great opportunity for everybody to kind of put their updates out there, including my rec update that I do make an effort to bring back to everybody. Obviously, only the things pertinent to the students and families at Foxborough Public Schools. So I thought it was a great solution. So I was kind of confused when it was brought up last week. So, you know, if there's a better solution, that's fine. And, you know, if my, if my being on the rec board means don't bring updates back to the school committee, it's just, that's kind of confusing to me, and it doesn't seem like school committee would vote me in not to keep them looked in on what's going on with the recreation board. So I guess I just wanted some clarification on that.
Anyone else? Michelle, any thoughts?
No. I guess I, do, what? Do we not want to give community updates? Is that what we're looking?
I think it was clarification, because we said, "Let's not," and then we did, and then, so.
But, okay, so I thought, we didn't want community updates under Others. So I thought then that's what rectified that.
Understood.
Okay, that's a, that was not the discussion, but...
Okay, so, but I mean, also, the discussion kind of happened when I just came in, so I'm not, I don't have to...
Sure, sure. So I, my question is, if we want to have recurring updates, or we want to have other items, then we should have other items, because then it's not limited to community events. I feel right now on the agenda, we are, when we bring things that are not event-related, whether it's acknowledgement of a recognition that someone received, right? Which is not an event. You know, because what is, then, we don't have a place to do that. Or when we have, or when we say, "We would like to discuss at a future meeting X," which has happened on several occasions, we don't have a place in our agenda specifically to do that right now. And I think that is important that we have that on the agenda. And what has happened is that Other got dropped, for whatever reason, and got substituted with This. And that, I think ultimately is, my question is, what happened? And maybe it's just me being hung up on the semantics of what this bullet is.
It was open meeting law violation, just to speak to your point. It was a gray area with the open meeting law. I think that's what the discussion was.
I don't think it was gray. I don't, I don't, have we received any advice from council that Other as an agenda, or from MAS C that Other as an agenda item was a potential risk? Or was that simply an interpretation that somebody had? Have we actually inquired with MAS C that happened? Because I do remember, and I forget, I, I forget her name. I always forget her name.
Dorothy Presser.
Thank you, Dorothy. She did say that that was an appropriate, when we had one workshop with her, that was an appropriate agenda item. And we have been very careful in our use of that agenda item to not cross over into over discussion or to an area where it was simply, at least in my recollection of our use of that agenda item, we were always very careful not to move into an area that would expose us to any type of violation. That is my interpretation only. But I do not believe that we, having, simply having Other as an agenda item is a violation of any open meeting law.
I personally would like to see it come back, because it was under things like that where we'd say, "Hey, congratulations, too," and a few people had awards and stuff like that. I think that's nice. It's not specifically a community event. I still like, I agree with what Ms. Ladani had said. I think having that area for community updates is, is great. And that's, that's, that's fine. And then, if there are other aspects of our committee or even administration that has pieces in that, it could go under that bullet. But I would also like to see the other thing come back, understanding, of course, that we're going to follow the law and not open it up to extensive discussion, or certainly not voting of anything.
Yeah. Did you, did you have any comments?
So the only thing I'll add is, back in that discussion at the time with legal counsel and asking when some questions were coming up as far as what was taking place under Other Matters, and that was back in the fall when Other conversation was taking place.
Yes.
The question was then asked, "Well, what is being mentioned at that agenda item?" And it was all of these community events. Well, then, if they're community events, call it what it is to be very, you know, transparent as far as what that agenda item is. But clearly, there's another need here that's missing. So that is something, whether it's bringing back the term Other Matters, or if there's a better term, whether it's, you know, future agenda item, new business, you know, I don't know what that needs to state there, but you've got something that's not meeting the needs here. So if the committee has consensus, I can go back to legal counsel and just ask, what is the best term, whether it's to bring back Other Matters? But the reason for this particular change in language was because that's what was taking place during that time.
During that time. That's the key. It was during that time. Because previously, we have used it for a broader use, and I remember at least... remember, at least when I joined the committee, Tina was very specific around the use of the word other. So maybe I learned from Tina, who I, I guess, I learned a lot from her about participating in this. She was very specific in why other was an appropriate term for that agenda item, not future, not proposed, not new business, but other was the right term for that. So I would like, I would like us to revisit that.
I liked having a catch-all. I mean, there was also a time that I think sometimes Mr. Youkna would be able to slip in a building update that didn't, I mean, it's just a small thing, it doesn't need a, a full agenda item on, on certain projects, things like that.
So I would prefer other matters as well. The, the reason this is here is exactly what was articulated there, that during the time of discussion about that topic and some questions about the topics that were coming up at that time under the other matters, everything was related to community events, and it was advised that it might be best to clarify that they're community events, because that's what was happening. And so that was the reason for it, but I, I think this discussion is very healthy. I, I agree with all of you, or the few of the members said, I think other matters is fine. I think other matters is fine. I, I don't believe that an update with no action by this committee, even if it's repeated every week, is, is a violation of open meeting law at all. Maybe legal counsel will advise differently, but just because it's done every single week doesn't mean it's a violation. It's no action by us. If every week I say there's a music concert, which there is every week, then, 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 then I'm not, I'm not violating the open meeting law by saying there's a music concert every week. So I, I think other matters is a great encapsulating, and it's also historically what we've used it for. We've gone around the table, and the others, and, you know, do, is whatever it is, and I would also say, sometimes it, it has a higher percentage of community events. No question about that, no doubt about it, but I don't think we have to have words there to clarify something. I think other does work.
Right, and it is all captured in the minutes so that people have those available as part of public.
Yeah, you're right.
Hundred percent, hundred percent agree.
You're right.
So I don't, I don't even think we need a motion for this. As I work on the agenda for the next meeting, I'm going to shift this to other matters, and then what.
Can we just make sure that we do have Dr. Berdus just check with council to make sure we're in line?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should, and I think she will.
Thank you, Sarah.
I think she'll follow up, so.
Yes.
Yep. So thank you, and thanks for bringing it back up, you know, again, it was a, maybe a, a finger in the dike, you know, at the moment, so to speak, you know, so, but all good, great discussion. Before I adjourn, anything else? I was about to say something, but any comments from anyone else? Anyone? I'm looking around the horn here, everyone? Brent?
No.
Rob?
I just want to thank you guys for coming out on a miserable night.
Thank you.
And being in person, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Michelle, good?
Oh, good.
Sarah, good? Thank you for signing in, Sarah, from afar. Safe travels. I'd like to do a roll call vote to adjourn the meeting, please. Sarah, would you, meeting, a motion, oh wait, sorry, can I have?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second by Sarah, motion by Brent, seconded by Sarah. Roll call vote, Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Aye.
Yes.
Rob?
Aye.
Aye for me, five zero to adjourn. Good evening, everyone, thank you very much.